This meeting of the City Council Work Session of June 11, 2024, order. I want to welcome everybody that's here and present in attendance and also goes online. And we want you to know that during our work session, this is a chance for the council to receive information and discuss items of interest to the city. You do not vote. You do not take items forward to our regular council meeting at 7:00. So with that, we'll jump into the agenda. And up first is employee new hire recognition. Alan Isom.
Mayor and Council, I'm excited to introduce Ms. Kim White. She has a new procurement accountant for the city, just started yesterday. She has a lot of procurement experience on public service, a lot of other projects we have coming up. And she's not working at City Hall, may have found her in the water. She's a member of the Beaufort Rowing Club. So we got to welcome her. Welcome back on the board. Glad to have her. Glad to see her.
Thank you. It's an honor to be here and work for Beaufort and Beaufort County and be under the Director of Finance, Alan Isom, as well as Kerry. The whole team is very astounding, and I'm looking forward to helping to expand the city and just bring whatever I can to the table.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much.
Sure. And before we do that, I just want to mention to everybody that Mitch Mitchell is joining us by Zoom online from New York City. Mitch, we see you.
Thank you.
So, JJ.
Jay.
Mr. Mayor and Council, we have an intern with us for the next three weeks. This is Jay McIntyre. He comes to us from the upstate of South Carolina. He's one of my firefighters at Land Room. I've known his father for a very long time. He is a full-time firefighter and career firefighter. And he is also a sprayer. Also, they're modernizing that. We're not C A D, we're not C S. He is a full-time student as well at Anderson University. He's majoring in Homeland Security and Emergency Services and minoring in Management. And when I came down here for this position, he reached out and asked if it'd be possible to work with us on our hurricane response this summer and emergency management, continuity operations, just to see kind of how large your jurisdiction does it before he went to work for Greer. So we're excited to have him. We're jumping into that from a staff perspective next week for continuity planning and our hurricane response planning, so he's going to take a big role in that. And he'll be with us for three weeks. He's already contributing to this little.
I mean, time couldn't be a little perfect.
But you can't see it firsthand. We don't allow that.
Yes. All right. Thank you, Jay.
You're welcome.
Okay. Next, we have a discussion item to pick up the bulk of this work session. That's going to be Waterfront Park Relieving Platform Inspection Report. And we'll turn it over to the City Manager.
Actually, I'll let Lynn introduce Bill, the engineer.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We have Bill Barna, which some of you may, over the years, they've been working, he's been working for the city of Beaufort. Most recently, we had our annual maintenance, our survey done of the platform, relieving platform at the waterfront park. This was set up for a schedule for every five years after the encapsulations in 2018. But Bill's here to kind of give you an overview of what was found during that report and kind of so that we can have a discussion of path forward and options. Bill?
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Again, I'm Bill Barna. I'm with McSweeney Engineers. We've done several projects for the city over the years. We were the engineers of record for the day dock, for the transient dock replacement, did some work on the waterfront park in 2008 with the construction management of that, and then several little odds and ends and repair projects over the years. You can go to the next slide. So I just wanted to talk about the state of the waterfront at the park. And essentially, our report and this discussion focuses on two major features. One is the seawall, and then one is the relieving platform at the park. The relieving platform makes up the bulk of the waterfront. The seawall actually does continue behind the relieving platform. It is largely inaccessible now due to shoaling. So we're not going to talk a whole lot about the condition of the seawall because a lot of those components are inaccessible now. So relieving platform, seawall, in the next slide, I'll describe what those are in a cross-section view if you'll go to the next slide. So this is a cross-section of the relieving platform. The whole waterfront looks contiguous. It looks like it's a seawall all the way across, but it's not. It's because mean-low water is at about the bottom of this fascia panel. When the tide goes negative, you can see up under there. You get a couple inches of headspace under there. It's supported by piles, 570 prestressed concrete piles, supporting a concrete cap, supporting a concrete deck, which is below approximately six feet of fill. Okay? So you've got the promenade, six feet of dirt, and then all this concrete being supported by all these piles. In recent years, and I will go into this a little bit more in the presentation, we've started to see some shoaling up under there now. And so a lot of these piles are actually inaccessible to the point where when I'm swimming up under there, my tank is banging on the bottom of the, of the bottom of the concrete while my belly's in the mud down there. So it gets pretty skinny. Next slide, please. This is a cross-section of the seawall, and you'll see this is actually prestressed concrete sheet piling. And then you have a fascia panel on the front of it. And then on the front of both the relieving platform and the seawall, you have this timber, timber rug rack that's on the outside of that, of that concrete fascia panel. So that's the description of the two structures, and I'll go into a little bit more about the history of them and the condition states. So if you go to the next slide, kind of an overview of what McSweeney Engineers knows of the history of the park. The design plans are dated 1974, so that's about the age of construction, '74, '75. The first record of inspection was 2003. And at that time, the inspectors dug up the seawall and some of the tiebacks and did some extensive investigation. They did a diving inspection at that time, and then no other inspections, as far as we know of, it took place until 2014. So 2008 was the waterfront park renovations, and then 2014 is when we conducted, McSweeney Engineers conducted, the first underwater inspection of the entire facility. At that time, 10 years ago, we found spalls on 177 out of 570 piles, so about 30% of the piles had missing concrete. And what we had noticed at that time were, was missing concrete on one or more, sometimes multiple faces, sometimes piles, square piles, square prestrose, stressed piles had become completely rounded over. Lot of soft concrete going on at, at the time. So in 2016, we came back as a result of that, the condition with the piles, we said, look, we got to test these piles. There's something going on because the concrete was soft. We could literally pull concrete off with our fingers. So what we did is we went back in and we cleaned several of the piles, completely cleaned the marine growth off of them with underwater pressure washer. And at that time, we're able to literally blow off that deteriorated concrete that was just kind of hanging on to the outer part of the pile. And then we also cored through the piles completely in five different locations, and then we had those piles tested. And what we found was, there was a high, high degree of variability in concrete strength between the samples that we took. So we had some samples breaking at 3,000 PSI and some, I think, at 7,000 to 9,000 PSI. So a huge, huge, huge range of strength. We also found that there was a high paste-to-aggregate ratio in the concrete. And what that means is there was a whole bunch of glue and not a whole bunch of rock in the concrete. On top of that, there was also a high chloride content from saltwater, from the surrounding saltwater. In addition to that, the air that was trapped in the concrete, which is, which occurs naturally, but the air voids in the concrete were mainly comprised of large air voids instead of being kind of spread out and dispersed through the concrete mixture. So that kind of validated that, look, there was something going on with the, with the piling. And at that time, we said it would be a good idea to investigate doing some remedial measures to these, to these piles. At that time, we also, as a result of our cleaning efforts, found, found two additional piles. There were five piles that were broken in 2014 that I failed to mention earlier. The failure of those piles, it was not from overstress. They just literally deteriorated away. So 2018, the day dock was installed, and right directly after that, we began the pile encapsulation project. So what we did there is we went in and we put structural jackets around these piles to try to, what capacity remained in those piles, we wanted to preserve that capacity. That was our goal. It was not to strengthen or get any more capacity out of it. It was just to preserve what we had left in the structure. So 2019, we, we came back and we did another full, full facility assessment. So we went back in and we went to go look at and inspect all 570 piles. At that time, what we had noted, noticed between 2014 and 2019, in five years, extensive shoaling had occurred to the point where, where there was so, so much of the structure we just can't access now. There's, there's no way even, even crawling on the channel bottom. It's, it's, it gets pretty tight in there. So there's a lot we did not have access to. Nevertheless, we did identify a couple of more critical piles, 33 additional piles that, that needed, needed preservation. So we implemented that in 2019. 2023, we got a call that, that there was an incident with the cruise ship. I guess one of the mooring lines had, had gone tight, and as a result, one of the handrail posts got, got ripped off. And it's my understanding that that was just the line going taut. It wasn't, it was not a huge strain on the, on the mooring per se. So then we did the, our third inspection, our third routine inspection earlier this year in 2024, and here we are. So I'll go into a little bit about what I just discussed and, and the condition that we're in. So if you go to the next slide, this is the structural condition currently above the water line. It's, it's really what you would expect from a 50-year-old steel and concrete structure. You have some, some cracks, which concrete gets hard, concrete cracks. You can see that the internal reinforcing steel has started to corrode. That's why you see the rust staining. That'll get worse. Eventually, that will spall off. The mooring hardware and the chains are showing signs of corrosion. Probably the biggest significant noticeable thing that you see above the water line is the wooden rug rack. About 50% of it is, is gone. And, and that's really the only thing that makes a fender system for this structure. It's, it's not, by today's standards, it's not really a fender system. It is not a marine fender system. Nevertheless, most of it is not there, and what is there is, is pretty much ineffective. So if you go to the next slide, this shows some of the, some of the conditions that you can see underwater. The pictures are kind of hard to see because they're, they're kind of hard to take, but this is a picture of the concrete deck, the bottom of the, the concrete deck, which is six feet below the promenade. This is a picture of the concrete cap. And then in the, in the very back where my flashlight is shining would be the, the far seawall, which is 36 feet back from the, from the face of the, of the structure. The, the pictures that you see to your right are, are pictures of the, the piling after we had cleaned them. So if you, if you look at the bottom picture there for scale, there's about six and a half to seven inches of that piling remains. That's a round pile. That's, that was a 12-inch square prestressed pile. Now it's a seven-inch round pile with exposed street prestressing strands. So this, this is one of the, one of the piles that was encapsulated. So common conditions that we see on these, on these piling that we continue to see are soft concrete, exposed reinforcing steel, and then rounding of the pile edges, and, and some of them are broken. Again, with the variability of, that was vetted in testing, just a high degree of, of variability of just the concrete itself, not every pile is like that. It's, it's really random. It's really intermittent. You might have one that's in terrible condition next to one that is, that's fine. So nevertheless, these, these represent some, some pretty significant structural issues because if, if you can imagine a 12-inch pile, 144 square inches of, of capacity is now down to, you know, much, much smaller, much smaller section. So you have a much smaller ability to carry the load when compared to the original design. So if you go to the next, next slide, I just threw this in here just to show you an idea of what some of the structural repairs can, consisted of. So this is just a section view of the pile, and, and then as you can see, this would, would be the original pile section, the original reinforcing, and you can see the outline of typically what, what it looks like down there where you're missing corners of, of the concrete. And in a lot of cases, you have the original pile section that's kind of necked, necked down. And so part of the repair is you go in, you put a fiber reinforced polymer jacket on the outside of it. We fill it up with 9,000 PSI epoxy grout from two feet, one to two feet below the mud line all the way up to the cap, just to, to keep that section, restore that section to the extent possible. So if you go to the next slide, this is just kind of some pictures of what that looks like under there. This is a jacket that goes all the way up to the pile cap. So this is the bottom of the pile cap. There's the jacket. This is one of the pumping ports that we use to inject the high-strength grout. That's a picture of the jacket entering the mud line and then just a picture of it, of a jacket. It's really not much to see, but it's down there, and, and the jackets themselves are in, in good shape. So if you go to the next, next picture, this is kind of the tell. When you, when you put it all together and you start looking at the notes that we've collected over the years, the notes that we have now, the amount of work that we've put into this thing over the last decade, you'll see that the, the piles in green are piles that, that have been jacketed. That's where we have already done a retrofit measure to those, to those piles, just to preserve the capacity and try to eke us out a little bit more life. The ones in yellow are where we have recorded deterioration that's on two or more faces as of 2024. So we're already starting to see, in those yellow, those yellow locations, we're starting to see that advanced deterioration that's, that's indicative of this kind of accelerated deterioration. The ones in red are broken, and they're broken to the, to the point where there's not enough remaining to feasibly repair them. In other words, there's no, there's no stub on either end that we can successfully, can successfully get to. The, the ones in blue, and you will see that the hatch shows how much of the structure that we can't get to now. What is concerning about that is, is the, the piles that are color-coded blue are ones that we had notes on previously in 2014. So 10 years ago, we had, we knew that we had a spall or a condition on two or more faces, and we have not been able to get back and, and look at the condition of those. They're just inaccessible. So that's concerning because there's a large portion that, that we can't, that we can't get to. The, in my opinion, the pile jackets, they're, they're effective. They've, they have done well in, in keeping those piles that were losing section from, from complete breakage. The downside of that is, is we don't know what's going on below the jacket. Okay? If there's that chemical reaction, that same pile still happening below the mud line that we can't get to. And that, the pile is still inside the jacket, and, and that, that mechanism of deterioration could still be there. It, it might not be fully arrested. Okay? And it's, it's for those reasons, when, when you put it together and you look at it in, in these terms and, and how widespread it is, that's, that's when I said, hey, look, we, we really need to start thinking about, you know, we're, we're at the end of the service life on this thing. It's 50 years old, and really, based on the rate of deterioration and based on what we have seen with the deterioration, based on the substructure, it's, it's at the end of its service life. Okay? So if you go to the next slide, based on that, based on our analysis, the inspection frequency has to be increased. The, the five-year recommendation is, is no longer valid. We bumped that up to at least a two-year inspection cycle. Wouldn't even hurt to go to 12 months, but I don't necessarily think that we're, we're quite there yet. The, the cruise ships, the cruise ships put an unbelievable load on the, on the structure. When I just did some back-of-the-envelope calculations, in a 25, 30 mile-an-hour wind, you could be looking at 13,000 pounds of, of additional force in one, one mooring line. And that, that's just with the, with the wind blowing normally. So it's, every time those vessels are tied up, pushing, pulling, they're putting a strain on a structure that was designed for that, but can no, no longer has the capacity to, to meet that load demand. The, the only way to, to, to vet that would be, you would have to do what's called a mooring analysis, where you look at the vessel configuration and how it's tied up, and then you do a whole bunch of trigonometry and some voodoo, and you come up with your loads. Then you have to run a structural analysis. That's going to get real expensive, real quick. It may prove me completely wrong, but I highly doubt it. I highly doubt it. The best bet would be to remove those loads and, until either you can put a, a breasting structure up there, so it'd be an auxiliary mooring structure, breasting dolphins, mooring dolphins, or until you do the analysis. The, the big thing is, you need to start looking towards the future and figuring out, okay, what does a replacement scenario look like? How much is it, is it going to cost? Because that's probably the first question that somebody is going to ask me. How long do we have left, and how much is it going to cost? Neither one of those, I have the answer to. I, I don't know. I could throw out a whole bunch of guesses, but that's, that's all it would be. But I, I do know that the, the gears, you know, the gears move slowly, and it is, it's time to start thinking about, okay, what, what are we going to do moving forward? Pile jackets, they're still an option. They're, but they need to be considered a stopgap. Okay? If we are going to continue to, to do more pile encapsulation, which isn't a horribly bad idea, it's expensive, but it's still a stopgap. There, there is nothing that we're, that we can do, that I'm aware of, that is really going to significantly extend the life of this structure. That's all I got.
I have some questions on the sediment accumulation underneath the thing. Is that exacerbated by those cruise ships? I mean, with the thrusters, are they throwing more sediment up underneath there?
That was honestly my original thought, was bow thrusters were pushing up in there. But, but this year, I noticed that all along the seawall at the marina was probably three or four feet shallower than the last time I went there, and the cruise ships aren't docking there. So they, they could be exacerbating it. It, it could also be that maybe shoaled in is, is the norm. And when we did the 2014 inspection, maybe that was, you know, after, I, I didn't go back and look at inspection dates for tides or storm events to see if maybe the shoaling is the more natural state. I, I don't think it is, but it's, it's possible.
And the other inspection a couple years back, 10 years ago, did you see the seawall then? Were you able to go?
We could, we could get back to a, a large portion of the seawall back then. We could, we could make it almost all the way, all the way back. We could make, for, for a majority of it. There was only, it's only over by the, by the playground, by the bridge, the corner by the bridge. There was that one little area we couldn't get in, but everything else in, in 2014, we could, we could get to.
And what shape was it in then?
It was, it was in, it was about the, how the rest of the seawall is. You know, it's, it's concrete sheet piling, and, and that's why you get sinkholes, because those joints are just, they always leak.
If we had to replace this thing, any idea what kind of recommendation? I noticed this at Canada Eagle Park. I don't know why they didn't backfill the first time. Maybe, I'm not an engineer. I don't know. I don't know what's the best way to do it if we have to replace this. Do you have any idea or any suggestions?
I think, and, and one of the recommendations I made was that's, that's kind of the next step is to start exploring what's, what's feasible. Unfortunately, with the way that the park is set up, you have to, you almost have to go back with that low freeboard structure. However, I would not put it under six feet of dirt. You know, that, that's the problem is, is they sandwiched the, you know, the, the business end of, of this thing between the water and, and six feet of dirt, and they just make it, it's extremely difficult to, to get to, to maintain or inspect. So I would be looking at, even if it was a relieving platform design, something different that, that you could maintain.
Is there a way to do further testing on the, the piles that are in the, in the soil, the lower portions?
I think there are four sitting dredge now. I mean, you, you, you would, I mean, you would, you would have to dredge, but the, the, I mean, that, that's the only way that you're going to get to those piles that are, that are buried.
There's no, there's no sounding or x-rays or anything that will give you any more indication.
Not, not that, not that I'm aware of.
Mike, you might be able to help me on this. A council meeting about maybe a year or two ago, we had the people from place out the Commerce Park, the glass place, it was recycling the glass, and they were talking about how they were making something that could encapsulate these things.
Yeah.
Remember that?
It's called Roman cement.
They were talking about that. It would be ideal for the park, I don't know if you remember that.
Yeah, I remember the conversation.
And they were talking about using all those piles under there.
Yeah.
So I mean, it was something that we might want to look into. I don't remember the whole conversation, but I just remember it was before you were here, I believe.
Of the 570 piles, how many are inaccessible now? 343?
So majority. And Mr. Mayor and Councilman Mitchell does have his hand raised. He has permission to speak, but just so you're aware.
Sure. Mitch?
Hi. Good evening, everyone. Thanks for the presentation. As I read this, I contacted Scott because I find it quite frightening, to be honest with you. And then, you know, given that the pilings are the main support structure, and so many of them are inaccessible, I, and I know, and I get it that you can't answer this question, but I'm thinking just from a safety perspective, I mean, could, could something catastrophic happens, or would it just be a gradual failure if we don't get ahead of it fast enough? That's the first part of my question.
Structures are typically designed to fail ductily, meaning that when they, when they fail, they do it, they do it slowly, so you don't have a catastrophic collapse. Usually, there's, there's a tell, you know? That said, my, my, my guess would be, under normal deterioration, let's say, that would happen. You would probably have more of a ductile failure, and you would start to see sinkholes or, or otherwise. Where I think you would start, where you could potentially have a catastrophic failure would be like if you had a cruise ship incident. That, that's where I can see you would have a very high load, very high short-duration impact load that would then cause the structure to fail in a non-ductile way. that would then cause the structure to fail in a non-ductile way.
And have we not seen indications of sinkhole-like features on the surface?
The the this, we have seen sinkholes on this on the surface, but most of those have been attributed to to problems with the seawall and not the actual relieving platform. And and actually, in recent years, that has has somewhat subsided. And I think that that probably has to do with some of the shoaling that that we've had as well.
And the last, not the last question maybe, but but for this round. Is the concrete that was used in this bridge somehow in the pilings somehow different from the concrete that was used to build our our Woods Bridge? Because it seems to be failing at a, I guess, an earlier-than-expected rate. Is it somehow a a poor quality concrete that was used? I would think they would not, I would think they would have thought the lifespan would have been more.
So at the end of the day, we we do think it was a quality control issue when they were when they were casting the piles. And that, the only thing we have to substantiate that are are the five concrete cores we took. You know, we we took, we took five cores out of 570 piles, and that's what we based that analysis off of. But given the wide barrier variation of of strength between the two, you know, we believe it was, it's probably more of a quality control thing.
Yeah, thank you. That was just.
And it would have been, it would have been different specifications, too. That the park would have been built under a different set of specifications than the state bridge would have been built.
Thank you.
Okay. So first of all, I want to thank you for the amount of information that's in this report. It's not good news, but I'm thankful for the fact that you guys did such a detailed review and inspection to give us what we have so far, to try to make a a decision moving forward. So just looking through this report, we've got 570 pilings. As I mentioned, 343 appeared to not be accessible anymore, and 227 were accessible. Out of the 227 that we're able to get to now, 47 of them have been encapsulated through through prior efforts to keep some of the structural integrity, which leaves 180 that have not been encapsulated. So in your, on the page where you have the pilings colored, it looked like 43 of them were yellow, which would mean that two of the sides have deteriorated, right? So I don't know if there's any easy way to digest this, but where my head is currently looking at it and taking your recommendations into consideration, would a viable path forward be to take those 43 that are yellow and encapsulate those? That'd be 43 more out of 180 that we would hopefully preserve the existing integrity and then dredge out. There's, it looks like there's a, on on one of them, it looks like the, a lot of the the shoaling is kind of in the in the center. So if we dredge that out to get a better assessment of what was deteriorating before and what the current condition of it is, maybe we would have to encapsulate some more. But ultimately dredge it out and then encapsulate the, or I guess, yeah, encapsulate the edge to where in the front, we have a seawall that goes all the way down to then move into the next step, which would be kind of what you alluded to with backfilling that in with like a a flowable fill or or something just to to prevent us from having to continue to Band-Aid it every five to 10 years as these things deteriorate more and more. Would you think that would be a feasible path forward?
Probably not.
Probably not.
And that for for a couple of reasons. One, and and I would, I would certainly, I'm certainly willing to entertain it and and to look into it and into it more. But I think with the dredging scenario, it it's going to get costly. We could, we could probably get the the permit to do it. But up underneath that platform, you're you're probably going to be sending a diver in there with a hand dredge to 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 do it. There's, you know, you've got, it's it's very little access that you that you have up under there. I mean, for me to get up under there, and look at me, I ain't that big of a guy. I gotta crawl up under that that fascia panel to to get up under there. So you can imagine, you can't really get equipment up under there to be able to to dredge it out. So by the time you were to to do that and then spend, let's say, another million dollars, let's say, spend a million dollars on on power repair, $2 million after a million, $2 million on dredging to get, to get what? Maybe 10 years, five years? Is it, you know, time value money, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be cost-effective? Which there there's a whole lot of ways to skin a cat, you know, whether you're you. Again, you know, would would the regulatory agencies even let you backfill it? And 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 they they may not. And that's why that was, the the recommendation that I made was, let's start finding out what what would be, what would be feasible from a regulatory standpoint and what are the orders of magnitude of this option, this option, and this option, and and be able to to vet them all.
So we could, okay, so I appreciate that. So we could probably move forward with the first part of that, which would be encapsulating some of the more deteriorated pilings, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
It looks like, it looks like most of the pilings that were around the broken ones have already been encapsulated. So now you have a couple of them where there's yellow, yellow right next to each other or, you know, it runs all the way down the.
There are several candidates for, there are several candidates that that could be, that could be jacketed. Again, it's, you you can do that as long as that's done with the understanding of.
It's stopgap.
It's a, it's, this is a stopgap until we've, until we've ironed out every, everything that needs ironed out and we have that that plan.
It's a, it is, and it's a Band-Aid, but I guess, short of replacing the entire platform, it would preserve the integrity of it regardless of what we did, if it stayed there. So if we put the jackets on those ones, right? And, okay, let me ask this. I I know that the the regulatory agencies may not allow us to backfill it. And if that's the case, then we'll have to come up with another plan. But if we were allowed to backfill it, would we be able to backfill it with like a flowable fill without dredging it? And then the material that's underneath there would just remain? And would that be a, be an issue?
Well, right now, the consistency of that material is like, like pudding. I, I mean, it's.
So there'd be no structural.
It's the, it's the fluffiest fluff mud you can, I mean, I could stick my hole up to my shoulder in it. So the 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 thing that that you'd want to be careful of with with just, say, filling it with flowable fill is you're, now you're just imparting a whole lot of dead weight to the to the structure, right? Because that, with the, what's what's below it has no foundational support. So all that sediment, all that shoaling that's filled in is literally, I mean, it is the consistency of of pudding. And so if you put flowable fill on top of that and then that that solidified, then it would just be hanging from the bottom of the structure. It would just be loading, it'd be imparting actual more load on the on the piling, on the structures. And you could, you could, you got to be careful with those.
Okay. On a short term, we couldn't do the jackets and then replace the fenders. I think that needs to be done since 50% are missing on the front side of that. And I guess we'd have to prohibit the cruise ships.
The 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 fenders really are are aesthetics at at this point. To to be honest, because any recreational vessels, they use the day dock. And it's just those.
I was thinking on the cruise ship side, are those in pretty decent shape still or?
No, no, I I would.
Is that 50% pictures where the cruise?
Okay.
So they're, they're, when the the cruise ships, they they throw out a, they, it's called a camel, but it's basically just a bigger buoy. Just a, it's just a cylindrical buoy that they they throw out, just like we do when we're tying up our boats to the, to the day dock. So there's, there's really no fendering, no marine fendering to speak of that's just designed for vessels.
The pilings, the, under the, where the shoaling is, do you think those are going to be deteriorating more so or faster or at the same rate? Or what do you anticipate?
We, we don't know. And that's, that's what, you know, that that's what's concerning is is we just can't get to it. Now that the, the fact that now they're just covered with mud, I, the the mechanism is still there. Whatever mate was inducing the deterioration to begin with, that has not been taken away just by the addition of of the shoaling and and my, most likely.
Okay, in other places you've looked at, what what would happen, you know, with the shoaling? Would it cause a terrible deterioration or less or no effect?
Usually, no, no, no effect. But again, this is, this is the only structure that I can think of that I've inspected, you know, multiple times and have noticed such a a change in the in the bathymetry.
Thank you.
Any other questions, hold it.
Mr. Mitchell has his hand raised.
Who got it?
Uh, Councilman Mitchell.
Okay.
No, he, just one other question. Are there any other like structures anywhere that you know of that that we could benchmark off as to how, you know, anything that they did that we'd be able to copy or learn from?
As as far as repairs or a new structure or?
As far as like our structure, our our park is built, you know, are there similar structures along the coast that have had similar problems? Or even even have there any, been any other ones built like ours?
I'm not aware of any other relieving platforms in the southeast. I have not inspected any relieving platforms in the in in the south. The only other ones I've inspected are for the Navy, right? Philadelphia, the Navy Shipyard's got a bunch of relieving platforms. But you you don't see them a lot in saltwater because of the the low nature. You want to try to get that stuff up out of the saltwater if you can.
And the one that is in Philadelphia, the Navy's, do you know any of their history at all?
Well, that, I mean, that that's a very, very old wooden wooden pier. It it's not applicable. You just, you don't, you don't really see many relieving platforms, I guess, is the, is, you know, the the point of my previous statement.
Okay, thank you.
Do you think that there would be structural integrity given to this platform if, say, we encapsulated what we could? And then even if we couldn't backfill it, put a seawall at the front to help support the the front of it? And I know it doesn't do much for the middle of the platform, but if you just did that on the front, do you think that would provide any kind of benefit at all?
It it might. I mean, by the time you figured out how you were going to engineer it, that the the one corner where the where the cruise ships dock, that's like 25 feet deep, you know. So you're you're kind of limited in options of what you could do there. You're probably not going to drive like a 80-foot-long sheet pile on that, on that corner and and backfill it. And then by the time you figured out how you're going to do that and then reengage all the loads to be able to crutch it from the bottom, like go in and just re-support it. By the time you figured out how you were going to go do that and then the contractor figured out how he's going to go install it, you might as well just start over. And that's, that that's kind of, because of the nature of this structure, you're, we're kind of limited on on what you can do on on a pier. Let's say, South Carolina State Port Authority, the wharf in Charleston, all those wharfs out there that are just piers that that go linear. If they need to improve on on that pier, if they got a a new crane that's coming in, needs another couple of piles under them or whatever, they will go and they will cut a hole in the concrete deck. And they'll bring a crane out there and they will drive a new pile right through the concrete deck. And then they'll, you know, pour it all up. And now you got a brand-new pile being supported there. The problem is, is at the relieving platform, you got six feet of fill. And then you get, then you have the deck. So by the time you go through that exercise, you're ripping up, I mean, what, how big of a hole do you have to dig just to get to the deck? And then what are you saving once you get to to that point? You know, it's, it's so, it's such a challenging environment to even come up with like a feasible retrofit measure other than, hey, let's pile jacket what we have access to with the understanding that, look, we're on our last leg here. We need to start thinking towards the future.
And we wouldn't be able to, I think I saw this in here, maybe we wouldn't be able to add additional supports.
Well, that's, that's, that's kind of what I was saying is, is by the, by the time you were.
Crater per.
You 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 have to do it from the, from the top. And and then so, you know, by by the time you do that, you're just going to, you're going to destroy the relieving platform to try to save the the 50-year-old infrastructure that's there, right?
I don't have too many options, it sounds like.
And there's, and like I said earlier, there's more than one way to to skin a cat. That's, that's why, and and it's going to take a long time to figure out what is going to be the best thing for Beaufort and what is going to be permissible from an environmental standpoint. And 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 that's going to take a while to kind of iron out and and to flush out all of those ideas like like you have, just that outside-of-the-box thinking of, hey, is there something? Is there a way to repair it that that I haven't thought of? And and there very well could be, very well could be.
American Councilman, when I heard, and I would like us to discuss this, but I think the next steps would probably be, I mean, it's pretty clear we can't have another cruise ship in here until there's some sort of mitigation or the strain that the cruise ship puts on the relieving platform. This will not be a surprise for American Cruise Lines. We've had a conversation with them already that this report was coming out and what was likely in it. I do believe, based on our conversation with them, they are willing to work with us on putting together some sort of mitigating structure that can help them still dock in Beaufort but not put a strain on the wall. So we can start those conversations with American Cruise Line. Also, I think we need to engage the OCRM and the Army Corps as soon as possible to start exploring what forms of repair or replacement would even be allowed for that structure. And then we can start getting to what kind of costs we're going to have and what kind of timeframe we're going to have on a project. But I think those are the two things right away that are the next steps that we need to pursue. But I'm, I'm going to go into discussing, if you've got other ideas. Steph will surely follow your desire.
No, I think that's a good plan. I I guess part of my concern is some, some of these, I don't know how long we'll be able to even get access to at the front because of the shoaling. That's how you say it, right?
Shoaling.
So the shoaling, it looks like, is continually getting worse. And some of these that you have marked yellow are right at the line. Once, once we lose access to them, we won't be able to encapsulate. So I'm wondering if, while we do that, if it would be beneficial to go ahead and and address some of those pilings.
Sure, as much as we can.
Yeah, as much as we can before we lose the ability to. Because we've already lost the ability to get to several of them that were noted to be deteriorated before.
I don't have many options.
Um, any more comments? If not, I'll open it up to the public if they have any questions or comments. Scott, state your name and address.
Paul Travis, 608 William Street. I'm speaking just as a private citizen, not as a representative of any family or family business or as a member of the planning commission. Mr. Barney, thank you. You are a marine engineer, I take it, is that right?
Yes. Yes.
Yeah. Okay. This has been going on for some time, this deterioration, right?
Yeah, probably since about 1977.
Okay. So anyway, we've got, we've got reports and we made repairs, we put jackets on piles and so forth. And so the jackets only preserve the strength of whatever's left on a given pile. Is that correct?
That's a safe way to look at it. We might've, we might've gained a little bit of capacity, but the intent was to preserve what we had.
I want to applaud the city manager for recommending going to the Army Corps and OCRM, and I think that should be done. I agree. I think that the cruise ship cannot tie up any longer without some approvable mitigation measure. I would encourage the city not to spend any good money after bad. I think Mr. Barna's company should prepare some preliminary reports after consultation with OCRM and Army Corps in line with what they will permit. They give some options for permanent replacement, permanent repairs to the park, which is one of our principal assets in our community. So it's got to be protected. I don't think you can do it in any half-baked manner. It's got to be done properly and fully. Thank you. Anyone else? Phil, anything?
No, I'm good, Phil. Thank you.
No other comments, we can go ahead and adjourn. And I want to thank the Mr. Barna for coming and telling us what we did not want to hear.